We have Councilman Hayek, that he was invited to stay from work, so he would like to come. Yes? Okay, thank you.
Not this time, please. This time, I'm not gonna do a mistake, so I don't know whatever I do. Okay. On behalf of the governing body of the Borough of Prospect Park, I would like to welcome you all to our small town that has a big heart. It is an honor to have you here in this council chamber to conduct your business. This is truly an honor for the residents of Prospect Park. Your presence here will put our town on the front pages and for the public to know who we are and where we are. Your honors, our doors are always open for you. And again, thank you for choosing Prospect Park as a friend. And again, I welcome you all to our humble home. Thank you.
Councilman Hayek noted that Prospect Park is a small town and with a big heart, and that's a very true...
That's why I want to be on your line from the bar.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Prospect Park is our smallest municipality in the county, if you say, but by no means is it least on our priority list. We have a great working relationship with the mayor and the council here at Prospect Park and administrators and all of the wonderful people you have working for this great borough. You guys do an excellent job. Hoppsville Park is one of our favorite parks within the county. And we have Deborah Hopkins back there nodding her head because of the CDBG allocations that we're able to grant you guys this last coming year. I think you're doing an outstanding job. And the entire council, mayor, and the administration is to be commended for such wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you for having us. And that being said, I'm gonna turn the conference agenda over to our county administrators.
Thank you, Deputy Director. First, on the agenda, we have a presentation from Frill Petronio. This year, we, through the budget process, created a division of alternatives to domestic violence, something that is near to Frill Petronio's heart. She'll tell you more when I bring Susan up with you.
Thank you. Ah, okay. Hold on. I do have the handout, and I have that to do with this meeting. But basically, first I want to thank everybody in fact that we have this here, to give you the opportunity. Then I also want to thank myself, Holly Johnson, because I know this man can afford me, and thank you all again. Unfortunately, there's a need for domestic violence programs in Pussey County. And I say unfortunately, because we don't want to have these new programs for victims of domestic violence. Something you might not know that new, but I had a twin cousin who actually had the same blood type, you know, when our two former police, no question, shot their mother's brain with a gun. Now, I ain't no fool, I know a piece of paper is nothing to stop the bullet. But one of the goals I hope this program will accomplish is to give women the strength and power to at least try and get help. And sometimes that's enough, hopefully there. Well, I wanted to talk you about what my program is about, or our program in my success, and why it's important. My eventual goal is to have pretty much a full service program where a victim of domestic violence, where somebody in need of services, a batterer or abuser, can find and assist them, whether it's finding a restraining order, for services, with counseling, for batterer counter. I know we can't go from A to Z within just a few months, so I'm doing this presentation and the handouts, trying to give an overview of what I hope we can do immediately, next year, three years, long-term goals, to everybody know what I'm basically talking about. I'd like to kind of break it down into three main areas. And I just want you all to know also, I came up with this information based on need in several different groups in Pussey County, meeting with judges, prosecutors, and a lot of the bar members. The three main areas are basically legal representation council and community outreach. With the legal representation, I'm modeling our program on Bergen County's working to domestic violence program. And what I'm seeking to do is get volunteer attorneys to represent victims who qualify and need representation, pre-representation out of restraining order here. Why is that important? Legal services is right now, the budget has been cut tremendously, they're not able to take that many people. What people they do take have a very, very low income range to qualify. They also do not, my understanding is that they do not take people who have any immigration issues. Sometimes those people are some of the most vulnerable people who need a restraining order. So what, me as an attorney and a former bar member, well, I'm sorry, pregnant of the bar, I have been recruiting and reaching out to both Pussey and Bergen attorneys, both on the criminal and family end, to try to get them to volunteer their time to represent somebody in court. Usually for one hearing, to find a restraining order here, and then hopefully that person will have a restraining order. That is something none of the other groups offer, besides legal services in its limited capacity, so I think that's extremely important. I know all of the other groups have expressed interest in supporting that. I don't know if down the road we can expand it to different income groups, maybe have a sliding trophy, even if somebody had to pay $10, having some skin again makes them show up more, a little more responsible, a little more committed. But my bottom line goal is to represent victims who don't qualify for services elsewhere that we can help. I've been doing that for 21 years in Bergen County, they've been around for 35 years, they have a great program. If we get busy enough, if that's about work, I would love to entertain in long term, perhaps a part-time attorney out there, kind of how the municipalities do it with part-time prosecutors, into that nature. That's just a long-range goal. If again, we're busy enough, where we don't have enough attorneys who will volunteer, because our bar does a lot of volunteering, and we're kind of a small bar, a small county, so I don't know how much people we'll have. One of the other things, I know our judiciary is great, even though we're losing so many, Judge Green currently taking the domestic violence, but I have no doubt that if we had asked the judges, "Look, we have certain people who can volunteer only certain days", I'm sure we can work with the judiciary to schedule certain timeframes that we can get our volunteers there. To be able to get a file ready and somebody to be able to go to court with that person, and since we're looking for volunteer attorneys, we want to make the job kind of easy, because you can spend an entire day, or just a trial, come back consecutive days, we are going to eventually need a paralegal who's going to do intake, that's going to be one of the staff that we will need. I think we should have at least somebody bilingual, the program's Spanish bilingual, the future's a big need for that community. That person who does intake will need training to also assess whether they qualify and are they a victim. You know, there's nothing worse than getting a file and arriving to go to court and having a case. I mean, not to waste anybody's time. Might be police report, and that could be witnesses, we want the plaintiff's person to be there to do it. That's all we eventually need to be a full-time staff member position. All right? So some of the goals also, when you look at the outline with the legal services, obviously is getting the word out in the communities, community outreach, recruitment of attorneys, recruitment of staff, perhaps CLE program, which will continue to lead to train, maybe our younger members who really might not know that much about representing victims, but want to try. I was there once, I appreciate the opportunity, I know people do appreciate it. So that's another part of it. The other section really is counseling services. Now, we have a couple of different groups in Pussey County. We have Rafa House, Two Family Services, Pussey County Women's Center. A lot of them offer more counseling for victims, where they're looking to strengthen families, or strengthen victims, not necessarily address batterer intervention. Like, I don't think any of them do do that in Pussey County. That's different than anger management. You'll see a lot of, okay, you see how to go to anger management, actually. Anger management is more dealing with your inability to control, perhaps to respond to a certain situation, you get mad quickly. That can choke a parent in, that can choke a lot of family-related type issues, and with the criminal. But batterer intervention, different. Somebody's gonna cycle of domestic violence, you wanna interrupt that cycle, unlike an alcoholic, you wanna interrupt the cycle. Those groups do not offer batterer intervention, so that is something I would like to see quicker rather than later, because that's something that there's a need for. I know the criminal judges and prosecutors would also like to see that. It's your ability to do shared services, we think, of that nature. Possibly, we need somebody who can get in there initially, who's gonna explore the opportunity for shared services, whether it's a crisis hotline, whether it's batterer intervention with the judiciary, the prosecutors end, whether the counseling services as some group can only offer in part. So, the counseling side is really, I would say, the second portion of the entire program. At some point, we're going to need to hire consultants, social workers, or licensed trained individuals who can do the counseling, which is gonna be, well, a lot of people work, we don't wanna take their jobs away from them. We're gonna have to reach out churches, communities, see if they will partner with that, and allow us to do that. Different communities might have different requirements, whether it's Arabic, Spanish. Female aggressors are starting to become more common, and I think that's because you see in the internet, and it's a lot easier, where you don't necessarily see female aggressors that are typically violent, you do see them really harassed and threatened through the use of email and those kind of communications. Now, that's a different group as well. So, we eventually need to do a lot of community outreach, to see who's out there that would allow us to perhaps use them for counseling morning through evening. So again, we will need people in place for that. People that, generally, categorically, as I see it, is pretty much a community outreach. Again, I wanna emphasize, our goal is to supplement what's out there, not step on anybody's toes, but targeting educational-type programs, community outreach, and letting them know our services are there, what's here, working with other people in community crisis responding, whether it's police departments in a different town. I think it's a very big, important component. That might be more long-term, but we'd like to eventually get people in place for that. I know, and I don't remember where I heard this from, but somebody had told me that just going and speaking to teenagers, and unfortunately, teenage violence has escalated, or we'll read more about it, they need to hear over and over, "No, it's not, it's not treated this way, no, it's not separate behavior." Especially in situations that don't have intact family, it might not really have good sense. So I do think community outreach and education is also a big portion of this. So we're starting more late now. I wanna get somebody in place who can start doing the need assessment. My goal for at least before the end of this calendar year is to try to get legal services up, and combine it with getting a paralegal in, who can start doing that. Obviously, my intention, I've stepped on toes with anybody who was in charge about better funding, to be a liaison with the judiciary, the bar, and, you know, hit up all my fellow attorneys to do this. Next year, I'm gonna look for more, obviously, in the budget, to expand the program, as I was talking about. So, once we start getting more people in, need assessment, hopefully more shared services. I do know there's a lot of grants out there, there's day day, again, we don't wanna take away anything that people who have setups right now, we don't wanna take their money, but I have no doubt we need something criteria, we can apply separately to try to help everybody out. Any questions? Anybody?
Freeholder, great presentation. We talked a little bit more about, we had a side conversation, we talked about some of the grants that are available to fund this tax commission, and some of the things that Bergen County are doing to offset the burden on taxes that were going to exist in Pussey County as well.
Can I have somebody else answer that question?
Sure.
You have a good go to that. Susan Di Giacomo had been helping me out for the last year, she's been attending meetings with me, she was probably part of Bergen County's setup, and I know you had a history with that buddy too, didn't you, a little bit more than I do at work? Go ahead.
Okay, I'm Susan Di Giacomo, presently, I am the Assistant Director of Alternatives to Domestic Violence at Bergen County, and I also am the legal program director, I oversee seven of the programs that we currently have. In addition, I am very much involved with the grants and the grant tours. So there's BAWA grants, there's BAG grants, there's CPMP grants, your formerly diaphers from Department of Children and Family Services, and they are very much one of the stakeholders that looks for batterer intervention programs. So those are some of the areas where grants are available.
I know we also got a community foster development grant that serves low and moderate income people, which is why I tapped to the handout, the income rate, which obviously keep in mind for doing services to people in that income group.
There's also one foundation grant I altered that also goes to domestic violence as well. They're a little bit on the downswing now because of the state of the economy and interest rate, but they have always been friends to domestic violence classes.
Chair, it's actually a great program in Bergen County, I'm just curious, how much of Bergen County's budget is grant-funded?
Um, we, our salary line is approximately half funded by grants.
Pretty good.
And we really rely on consultants to keep our staff, our full-time staff, down. So we're half-staff, half-consultants.
Were there any other questions? Thank you, Freeholder, and Susan for that great presentation.
I have a question for you.
Please, you may.
Are you gonna partner with the local digital towns that are deferred?
Actually, you're deferred, currently is supervised by, say, a community women's center, and if they need any support, you're certainly to be there, but they are the supervising agency of that program.
As they came to me, they wanted to, they went to a fundraiser, they wanna get their name out there, and I was just wondering if your program would eventually try to encompass all 16 municipalities as a support group for those in the digital centers?
That is actually the goal of the, say, a county women's center, and they're initially would always be able to run this tour, however that is.
And I don't wanna get into stepping on toes, and if it's don initiative, and I don't know if it's a hundred physically for, you know, it's not our goal to go and take anything away, but if they said, "Look, we need some help, here's where we need the help, to get our, to get our, to counter shared services," sure, usually a call. And I met with some of the people that enabled the ones who said, "Look, we need legal services, we don't need batterer intervention." They may just don't, they might just not have enough people to share numbers, and if we're in a position to help, I would certainly love to eventually get to that point where, you know, any one of the towns can call and say, "Hey..." Anybody else?
Yes, if I may, I just wanna share one, obviously, I wanted to, who's you, you're the controlling arm, remember? When we first randomly stated that this was a program, it was near dear to you, and you wanted to see implemented in the county, and to see a contribution to something that's extremely encouraging, and extremely bringing everyone together and making this happen. I just wanna share personally, the two aspects I'm also encouraged by, and obviously, the legal services are practically most important part of it, the batterer intervention, because of the cycle that it breaks, because it addresses something that most programs don't, is so encouraging, and I know that it's a pattern, that many children grow up and, and witness domestic violence, have a greater probability to reviving themselves and to be perpetrators of basic crimes. So I'm very encouraged by that, as well as the education outreach. You know, I, I wanna share personally, I grew up and witnessed domestic violence, and I grew up in neighborhoods where if you tried to speak up, people totally minded at you. And you had no idea where, you know, it really felt helpless as a child, because there wasn't education in the schools, and many of us didn't even know how to identify domestic violence growing up, because it was, unfortunately, many neighborhoods were normed, it happens, there are arguments between parents, but the brain of that education, the more information that's given to individuals, the more likely that there would be a phone call from, reportedly, one of the individuals very empowered to stand up. And I just think that this is so vital for our communities, because we have individuals, as you mentioned, from other cultures, who may come here and not know what the law is, maybe don't speak the language, you don't know how to navigate the system, maybe victims of domestic violence, and may assume, "I don't have any rights, maybe I don't have all the documentation that's necessary, so I'm just not gonna report." And to have individual employees, paralegals that can speak bilingually, or can speak in terms of two languages, Arabic, Spanish, or any other language, that can help them facilitate and navigate the system, is so great. Once again, I just wanna commend you as well, for the work that you guys have done, because I think this will have great impact, and this is just real, real help in programs that are needed in our communities, and again, it's so much for the...
Thank you.
Just a few other introductions, I know we have Councilman Sacaria here today, Councilman Rob Artis from Hoppsville Park is here, we heard from him, Mayor George Bill Strang of our meetings, and the neighboring Mark Dale is here as well. Next on my agenda, we have a public hearing to consider amendments on Section 8 of the subdivision site plan resolution, which recommends up the State County Planning Board.
The State County Board chose for the elders on June 10, 2014, adopted Resolution 20, Resolution 24-45, which calls for a public hearing, which is scheduled for 5:30 on Tuesday, July 20th. The public hearing will take place in the municipal building for the Borough of Prospect Park located 106 Ground Avenue, Prospect Park, New Jersey. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding a proposal to make amendments to section, Sections 8 of the subdivision and site plan resolutions, as recommended by the State County Planning Board. Notice of the public hearing was published, quote, in record, that the hearing was on July 11, 2014. Frill, there's Bartlett, Petronio, Dapi, Gert, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaBour.
Here. Before I open the floor to the public on these amendments, I'm interested, it might be helpful to see if someone would explain the planning.
The planning board, whoever would like to explain what we have to say.
Please, explaining directly.
Sorry, I missed the spot, my phone's, I know you're up to the task.
No, I love talking about this. Not a solid point.
As a result of the planning board managing this program over the past several years, it's a very successful program, in that we've been collecting funds, as you know, through development review, as applications come before the planning board, and the monies that are collected for projects that are on county, right now, the way that orders is currently written, it's specified county routes, not all county roads. If it's a project that takes place on one of those designated routes, we collect a fee that's calculated based on the frontage of the property. And then that money stays within the community, it's used for improvements along that route in the, in the, in that particular community. For instance, in West Milford Township, the freeholders through this program funded a town clock, which is right in the center of the West Milford Town Center, and the appropriation was $25,600. So that was a great improvement and a partnership with the township and the county. We've done signage for downtown, downtown business districts, we've done lots of different improvements that have benefited the carers, just in terms of aesthetics as well as function and public safety. So the proposal before you is to extend the program from those one or two designated county highways within each of the 16 towns to all the county roads. And just to be clear, that only affects commercial properties, it does not affect single-family residential properties. So this is basically the kind of applications that we normally see for the county planning board, which are usually of a commercial nature.
And the request for the funding comes from the municipality?
It does. Many of the communities were, have been pleased with how the program's been going, but they've felt that it's kind of restricted, since only one or two roads are currently designated within each of the 16 towns. This way, we have maximum flexibility to do improvements on any county road, and you know, there's a lot of county roads in all of our towns. So it's, it's just a way of making the program more flexible, so that when the towns work with the county to think about these improvements, we're not restricted to one or two sites, one or two roads within the town, but also, again, it's, any monies that are collected within a particular municipality, the improvements stay in that municipality.
And Chair, this costs the town no funding at all?
Oh, correct. This is an assessment that's collected from the applicant that's before the planning board, so it does not involve any tax.
And Michael, the county authority, still needs the money until the municipality requires it?
That's correct. We're really acting as the manager and bank for this program. And what we do is, ideas for use of the monies come from both the county and the municipalities, we keep the communication going. The clock's a good example of that, because the county freeholders wanted to do something, they knew that Milford Township was trying to improve their town center, and then the township, I believe, had the actual idea of the clock, so that's sort of how that came together.
And not to put a man on the spotlight, but Mark Dale has made a request for we grant the license as well for lighting on Belmont Avenue.
That's why I'm here, to, to like to support this.
We'll have it open to a public portion, but I just repulse.
That's correct. That's a, that's a great example of where a municipality has already started on a streetscape improvement program, and since these, these funds are available, we were able to continue the program, and I add, so the community was really in the leadership, and we were able to partner as a funding source.
Any questions, Freeholder? Okay, I'm taking a motion to open the...
Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Taking a motion to open the floor to the public hearing?
I'm making a motion.
Second, by Freeholder Laura, and second by Freeholder Bass, so I'll call.
Freeholders Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaBour.
We want the public opinion to be heard. On these amendments, and these amendments only at this time, please step forward, state your name and your address. I want to remind everyone that any comments you made are a matter of public record.
I only have one question. How can the Borough of Prospect Park benefit from that public resolution? Our engineers here sort of give us an idea of where to go, what to do. That's my question.
We will reach out to you. We will reach out to you, we'll let you know if balances of the money...
The lawyer engineer.
Certainly. And we'll sit down and talk about all the projects you have in mind.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman, we have a new administrator, I've met her for the first time yesterday, we're gonna come sit down with her, if the mayor is available, and go over some of the things that the county can do with Prospect Park, so we look forward to that as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else in the public wish in the air?
Had I failed emergency, another councilperson?
This is Councilwoman Westmoffer, Ada Eric. Westmoffer, Councilwoman. I actually came down with a resolution opposing this. This came before us last Wednesday, I did counseling. The way it reads, and the comments that were written, handwritten on our copies that we were given, we were opposed. Now, according to the clock, what I heard about the clock was, you offered the clock, we didn't ask for the clock. So it's a little difficult. So, the way this was read the other night at council, and I love that explanation, you should come up and tell our people, because I'm gonna hold this back right now.
Not to interrupt you, we are coming September, we have a meeting in...
I know, but that's two months away.
Yeah, it's kinda, nothing...
Harry, you look there, you know how we act today, we don't go, we act now.
Hey, you don't govern, nothing happens overnight.
We don't, until you get people like me in there. But what this is, is we need an explanation, a better one than this sheet of paper, and I mean, this was what was given to us, and it has, I don't know where the handwritten notes came from, and it's littered with handwritten notes all the way through. Our business community saw this, and they feel that they're being put in hard... Our business community saw this, and they feel that they're being put hard pressed on this. We also, a couple of lawyers looked at it, and they said that this money is leaving the town. I like that explanation. And that's the first time I heard that explanation. So I'm going to hold back on the resolution that they sent me down on, because now I'm not in favor of this, if that's true.
My name is Randy George, I'm the mayor of Marthelton. I'm here tonight to support this. I received a letter from Michael, a place from Planning Board, and he suggested they had $10,000 in an account for Marthelton. We created, we came up with two streetlights that cost $10,000. I sent it down to Michael, and we received the $10,000. I got it from the preholder board about, I think, two months ago.
Well, that's all right, actually.
I like exactly the way it worked. I believe the businesses should pay. You know, they make money in the town, and I like the fact that they're encouraged to give it back.
I only have one question. How can the borrow across the park benefit the public's resolution? Our engineers here, so if you could just give us an idea of where to go, what to do?
Thank you. Joe Messer from Hawthorne, Mayor of the County Planning Board. The reason we did this at the Planning Board was because the money was being collected, and it wasn't, it wasn't a corridor, we couldn't spend the money. Now, Hawthorne, we made money on Quagmire Road because of Walmart, Abe, but we couldn't spend it on Lafayette Ave. Lafayette Ave didn't raise any money because it was all residential buildings. So this way, the money can be spent any place, on a county road in that town, which it would improve the towns and help us out. I think it's a great program. I hope the preholders go along. So, thank you, Preholder. Nice to see you out of the county.
We're the county.
I know, you're the county.
The school is part of the county.
The school is part of the county, with the biggest heart. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should be heard on this issue? Seeing no one at the microphone, and which was, was, was. Second, I feel, second by Beth, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Councilwoman, when is your next council meeting?
I'm, 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 sorry. Third, third Wednesday of August.
Okay, that will be.
Twenty? Twenty.
That's the twenty.
We're on, we're on summer schedule right now.
You know, I could go ahead and ask it, assuming you're asking people, send somebody up to discuss the program. So, if you, if you'd like, I'll just email it to Chair.
Absolutely.
You can put us on.
And we'll make the appropriate personnel available to answer any questions, and hopefully this will be.
Because I'm, I'm going to bring what I just heard today back, and that's why I'm not giving that resolution. Because what we heard Wednesday night is totally different than today. And I like the fact that, I mean, just what he just said, can't use, you took it from one street, but you can't use it on another unless you expand it.
This will benefit the entire municipality. It's always the ones that are listed.
And we have a lot of county roads, but most of it's through the woods.
Okay, I think we have to tell everyone's question, Councilwoman. There's a first question there. Thank you very much, Mayor Mark, Joe, absolutely. Thank you for your remarks. Glad to share the job. Great. Motion to adjourn? Okay, review of agenda, K1 through K68. Any other questions? Are there any late starters? Yes, Director. We have four late starters. Quiet my voice. K69 is a resolution applying to the state and Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and Breignakes Program for the proposed Garrett Mountain project. I think you have it under apply there. K70 is a resolution guaranteeing application of the friends of State County Parks to Department of Environmental Protection, the Breignakes Program for the proposed Rutherford County Park and Brooklyn Project. K71 is a resolution awarding professional services contract to DAC, Digital Assurance Certification for Specialized Accounting Services in connection with the preparation of a risk assessment review, compliance review concerning odds issued by the county of the state and the State County Utility Authority and the State County Improvement Authority for an amount not to exceed $10,000. And K72, which is a resolution authorizing the awarded contract to WHL Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Bill Deary, Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration and Protection, New Jersey for the oil to gas conversion and boiler replacement, ordered from Marion Senior Center Housing Complex, as per the specifications. All require five oaths to activate general. Thank you, Council. Any questions from the preholders on the late starters? All right. Is there a need for an executive session?
There is not.
All right, I'll take, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second by James, second by Beth, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Announcement to open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specified in time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted to reorganize the issue being filed with County Clerk, Post and Administration Building, the males are due to news service in accordance with provisions in the law.
Local?
Preholders Bartlett, Cutroneo, Dapi, Bill, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Here. Please stand for the indication.
Father U. O. Wood, University of Parkland, we thank you that we once again come together to do business in the county. Although we have had this opportunity, this privilege to come into the Prospect Park Board, we ask you every father to put a blessing over this place from the mayor and all of the county people, the administrators and directors and all of the residents. We ask you to always look over the residents of the State County, and to guide us with your wisdom, that when we will fall short, you will make up the difference, and that you will always allow us to do those things in our utmost and most best service for the community in your name.
Amen. Little Dr. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a mission, under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died serving in the United States armed force, and also included in that moment of silence, someone that State County, New Jersey, has lost a true fighter, a deeply representative, who lost a congressman. The rule will be ended till June 24, 2014, in motion. Someone?
Yes.
Second by Cutroneo, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Any comments or report from the preholders?
I just want to share real quick that last year, we had the opportunity to implement Senior Citizens Appreciation Month, and this year, we redo it in August 18 through the 24th. Thanks to the hard work of Deborah Hoffman and Mary Kazinsky, we have this amazing program throughout the calendar when businesses in different municipalities have offered free food, certain programs for seniors during that week. For certain examples, McDonald's will offer free breakfast to seniors during that week, Senior Citizens Appreciation Month, August 18 through the 24th. We also have specific diners. We have municipalities from Wayne to Patterson to Hawthorne. I believe Motegro is also on the list of restaurants that will participate, which is close. As of yet, we don't have a business in Prospect Park. If you guys know anyone, please let Deborah Hoffman know. I, I know it doesn't apply to anyone here, because no one's here. He's a senior, everyone's too young to, to qualify, but it is a one.
What's the age?
Huh? You were too little and too young to qualify. If you're senior, the businesses will not call anyone, don't worry about it. But it is a great program because it encourages participation from the businesses around the county. And we're really excited about it this year, we've been expanding. We're going to have a senior picnic, we're going to have a lot of programs. Some of the theaters are offering free movies and free popcorns to the seniors. We'll have the information sent out to all the municipalities, so you can let your seniors know. It's just our way of appreciating seniors around the county.
Deputy Director Beth? Thank you, sir. I want to inform all of the residents of Prospect Park, County, and State of our upcoming State County Fair. This year's State County Fair will take place August 14 through 17 at Garrett Mountain Reserve. This is the first year that the fair is actually being coordinated on behalf of State County Boys, Children's, Preholders, and our friends of the State County Park. We have exciting weekend full of activities going on. There's going to be fireworks on Friday night, obviously rides, games, vendors. There'll be a boxing match, car shows. We're shooting somebody out of a cannon. It's going to be helicopter rides.
Sorry, I'm shooting.
I didn't get ahead of myself there. So, no cannon shooting this year, the Sheriff Department will get that. But it's going to be a great time for the whole family. We're going every day from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. In addition to it, we're also having a 4K or 5K run on behalf of the State County CASA. We're doing the State County Chess Tournament. We're going to do a Battle of the Bands. It's going to take place, so it's going to be a lot of exciting events going on. Our 4H program is really chipped in, it's going to help us out a lot, too. Bringing animals, chick hatching, pony rides, petting zoo, rear garden, bear guarded, bear guarded. And hopefully you all have a, have a great time, all right? August 14 through 17.
Thank you, Deputy. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, I just want to add, hopefully you may be interested, today, some county officials met with West Milford officials at the Marshall Hill Bridge issue. We had a pretty, I thought, informative and productive meeting. Westmofford was very forthcoming with their, with their concerns. We explained the issues facing the county and facing the bridge. I think a great dialogue was started, and hopefully we'll be able to address the issue of repairing this deficient bridge as least possible and convenient, although it will be inconvenient to the good people of this town. So I just wanted to let you know, and we started that conversation.
I, I saw the email on that. The thing about bridges in Westmofford is when it happened at the Elks, at the bungle that happened, that's what Westmofford's afraid of.
So am I.
Thank you.
Those were the comments. But we will continue that dialogue and understand this isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow, next week, next month, but it's likely next year. You can't begin to discuss it, you can't begin to discuss it, discuss it simultaneously. So we started that dialogue, and like I said, we'll continue talking through the issues of Westmofford. Communications. One intimated motion? Second. Motion made by Beth, second by James, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Take a motion, go open the public portion of the meeting. Someone? Motion by Beth. Second by Cutroneo, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Anyone from the public who should be heard on any issue, please step forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes, and remember, anything you say is a matter of public record.
Will be held against me. Ada Eric, Westmofford, I'm a councilwoman, but I'm not here as a councilwoman. This is as a State County taxpayer. First, I want to thank you for the traffic lights on Skyline Drive, Ringwood. They, I'm on the end of it there at Ringwood, and they are truly the godsend of night. It totally alleviated the backup all the way up to Skyline Drive and on the 511. But there's where the problem starts, the 511. You have a proposal to put in a circle. Circle that the state deems, you know, they're too dangerous, don't put in circles. But I understand that a grant has been given, it was applied for a way back, finally came through, and I'm sorry, it's a very ridiculous thing to do, down on the bottom of that road is to put a circle. If that is for road improvement, that grant, take a look at Margaret King on Slokesburg Road. There's where a traffic light is needed. The morning backup goes well over a mile. Last week, there was a horrendous car crash there on that corner. It was deemed it was too, you know, they had a sheriff there at one time, it was too dangerous to put a cop there. So there's where you should be looking, not to do a circle on Skyline Drive. Skyline Drive, you fixed it, it works perfect. Use the money elsewhere if it can be, or if it is a grant that was only for that, give it back. Reapply and put us a light on the other side. That's used by everybody over there. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public who should be heard? Seeing no one at the microphone, maybe I'm breaking it. Second by Cutroneo, local?
Preholders Cutroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director La Bor.
Yes. Council, the issue of the roundabout, we don't call them circles anymore. The issue of the roundabout on the intersection you're talking about, there's been a lot of spirited discussion on that. But everyone has to understand that the county, it's not only receiving grants for repair or to enhance it, they have to, enhance the safety of that intersection, but also we have a obligation to protect the public. There have been a lot of opinions back and forth on this, there's a lot of dialogue going on to see, maybe we can cherry pick the best parts of all the recommendations that are made, but at the end of the day, we have to do something there because it has one of the highest crash incidents in all of the counties, and that's factual. So we do have a responsibility to protect the public. We're going to try to do it in a very intelligent way, on that, applies to the law, on that to enhance the safety. We have to rely on all professionals, both the county, the state, and Westmofford, to put their efforts into the law.
One of the things you want to look at then is the approach immediately before that from Westmofford.
I mean, Bill, we'll have plenty of opportunity, I'm sure, to discuss this matter in the coming months.
We are arranging right now a public meeting in Ringwood. I don't know if the date has been set yet.
No, but it's, maybe the second, the second week in September.
We want to wait till after the summer, where people are around, we will have a public information meeting in Ringwood so that people can discuss their concerns. The only correction that I would make is that the state and the federal government actually encourage circles, which is why they, the money is coming from, round, not so, I'm sorry, we don't call it circles. And there is actually a difference, which I have learned, a circle in Franklin Lakes is not the modern roundabout that would be built here, but there will be a public meeting in Ringwood in September, and it'll be on our website, Ringwood's website.
Okay.
I do agree with Rob Yeller, that really is, I don't have any calls together.
Lots.
Did we ever share? Did we ever share the data on the accident rates for that other intersection with the other?
The skyline?
Yes. So they have that same data?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the mayor and the township administrator a month or so ago, where we shared that we actually had representatives of the township, TPA, and we had the Ohioland there as well, right?
And they were all supposed to be at this?
And they will all be at this public hearing, this public, Gillisville Statistics.
Okay, take a motion to add K-69 through K-72. Second. Move by James, second by Beth, local.
Realde Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Motion to K-1 through K-72. Move by James, second by Petronio, Realde Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour. Yes. Doing your business? Personnel?
Move personnel attendant.
Move by James, second by Beth, local.
Realde Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Bill's voice? Move by James, second by Beth, local.
Realde Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes, certification payroll.
Certification payroll.
Move by James, second by Beth, local.
Realde Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes, received departmental report.
Received file.
Before I call for adjournment, I want to take this opportunity to thank Prospect Park for hosting us and providing for us. And I want to thank also the people of Prospect Park and throughout the county and our department that stood here this evening to help move progress forward. Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn. Make a motion by Dapi, second by Petronio, three and the local.
Realde Petronio.
The future. It all starts with determination, dedication, and a dream. Since 1970, Passaic County Technical Institute has shown our young people just how bright the future can be. PCTI, winner of three prestigious national awards, is located in Wayne on a beautiful 55-acre campus. It is a fully accredited comprehensive high school serving all of Passaic County. We offer students 13 specialized schools and academies and worlds of opportunities. Our teaching staff and faculty receive continuous training in order to stay ahead of the ever-changing needs of the 21st century. Our diverse student body consists of over 2,000 talented young adults from surrounding communities. PCTI is much more than just a cutting-edge career and technology high school. Our award-winning students and faculty, commitment and pride make our school a unique and exciting place to obtain an excellent education while learning the necessary skills to excel. From our academic to our career and technological programs, to our sports and activities, we're here to show you that.
We've got the spirit!
My name is Samantha Matos. I'm enrolled in the Academy of Medical Arts. I'm in HOSA, which is Health Occupation Students of America. I'm in Student Council Interact, and I'm also a member of the Literary Society. I want to go to college. I've been accepted to William Patterson. I'm gonna major in nursing. It's gonna take me a while, but I want to be a pediatrician. I chose PCTI because I believe that it was the only school that could give me the opportunity that I wanted and provide me with the education that I wanted to succeed in the future. Through the academy, I was able to become a CNA. And as a CNA, I can go work in a nursing home, I can work in a hospital, you know, I can do private care. So I have the option of going to work and having that education, or I have the option of going to college. One thing that PCTI has taught me about myself is that they try to teach you that not everything is easy, not everything is gonna be handed to you, and that you have to work to get where you want to go.
The future is bright for our students at PCTI. They are here because they want to learn and be the best that they can be.
My name is Anthony Gogler, and I'm a senior here at PCTI. I'm in the Academy of Medical Arts. Some of the activities that I'm involved in, HOSA, Health Occupation Students of America, National Honor Society, cross-country indoor track and spring track.
My name is Tila Gaffner, and I am a senior. I'm in the School of Communication Arts, and I major in advertising art and design. I'm involved in National Honor Society. I'm vice president of Student Council Rotary Interact, the Gifted and Talented Program. There's volleyball, bowling, and spring track and field.
My name is Eleanor Gonzalez, and I'm a senior at PCTI. I'm in the School of Applied Technology, majoring in drafting. Also, it has taught me to be disciplined, to persevere, to pursue my goals.
PCTI students have opportunities available to them that aren't found in many high schools. Not only do our academic courses challenge our young men and women, our career and technology courses go beyond preparing them for life after high school. Placing our students in real-life job situations allows them to experience the American workforce in the classroom. We provide all of our students with the accommodations they need to achieve a high-quality education. Special needs students have resource center classrooms and are mainstream throughout the school to help ensure their success. Under the school-wide Proud to Be an American campaign, students learn the true value of American ideals. Patriotism and community service are essential elements of a PCTI education. And 73% of our hard-working students go on to further their education after graduation at top universities, colleges, and trade schools throughout the country.
Going to school here is really like another home, another family environment.
It's warm and friendly.
It's a great place to be in.
There's something for everybody in this school.
PCTI presents worlds of opportunities to students. The opportunity to work with technologically advanced machines, such as the latest family of Pentium computers, and more than 1,650 other computers for our students. Our students receive hands-on experience right in the classroom from all 13 specialized schools and academies. In our ITV studio, students can even be linked up via satellite in real time to places all over the world. Passaic County Technical Institute offers a variety of exciting courses. Students may take honors and advanced placement courses, and even university-level courses earning them college credits while in high school. Excitement doesn't just take place in the classroom. Our student activities and sports programs allow students to represent the school while having fun and learning the importance of teamwork. From our state championship football programs and student government, to our ROTC program, there's something for everyone at the home of the Bulldogs.
My name is Dr. Sandra Ellis. I am a dentist, and I have a private practice in Rochelle Park, New Jersey. High school is a major developmental component in shaping who we are and who we're going to be. PCTI helped me determine what career was gonna give me the most fulfillment and enjoyment. I had an advantage going into dental school. While most others were embracing the field of dentistry for the first time, it almost seemed as if it was second nature. The opportunities to compete in the field of your choice and to test your skills greatly developed my motivation and what I wanted to do in life. I haven't seen anything like this before. You walk in, there's a bank, there's a restaurant. It keeps getting better and better. I would have never, ever been where I am today if I hadn't come to a PCTI.
Dreams come true at PCTI. Our teachers, our leaders, these are the people our students look to for help and simply look up to. At PCTI, our faculty and staff take great pride in guiding each student to graduation and beyond.
I think that the instructors at PCTI are highly qualified and dedicated professionals who ensure quality education in their students.
Really push you to the limit to do your best, and I really like that.
The teachers at PCTI are devoted to their work, and they are always there to help you.
They really care about you.
I would definitely recommend PCTI to any student who is interested in attaining a quality education.
Extensive training and dedication keep our teachers in touch and up to date with today's technology and demands. Being a teacher or staff member at PCTI means so much more than educating. Taking the time to be there for each and every student and to be a role model is an everyday part of the job. PCTI is ready to take all of our students to greater heights and achieve their ultimate dreams.
My ultimate dream is to become a psychiatrist and open my own practice.
I plan to open my own web design business someday.
Get a master's in art therapy.
My dream is to be on Broadway because I love to perform.
My ultimate dream is to open my own automotive service shop.
My ultimate dream is to become a certified public accountant because I like to work with people.
My future plan is to pursue a career in drafting, either in the architectural or engineering field.
To be an inspiring teacher.
To become a financial analyst.
I'm gonna major in biology and then continue on to med school, ultimately becoming a plastic surgeon.
To become a CEO in a big corporation.
I want to become a pastry chef.
My ultimate dream is to become an FBI agent dealing with terrorism and homeland security.
To study musical theater.
To be the owner of an upscale salon.
I'd love to be a corporate lawyer.
My ultimate dream is to open up my own business.
I'd like to major in political science and eventually become a lawyer and at some point get involved in politics.
Yesterday, the dream began. Today, the expansion is a reality. Tomorrow, our enrollment will increase as PCTI prepares to welcome an additional 1,000 students. Dreams definitely come true at PCTI. Many new and exciting changes continue to take place, but one thing that remains constant is that.
We've got the spirit!
For further information and answers to all your questions concerning Passaic County Technical Institute, call us at 973-790-6000. You can also visit us on the web at PCTI.TEC.NJ.us.
See that small shape behind your stomach? That's your pancreas.
If you're anything like me, there's a pretty good chance you didn't even know it was there. But all that changes when something goes wrong. Think about this: pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States.
More than 35,000 people will die from it this year.
The five-year survival rate is only 5%.
Picture that. Walk into a room with 100 people, five years later, only five are left. That is a statistic you do not want to be a part of.
These are people just like you.
People like my daughter, Bridget. People like our mom. People like my husband, Andy.
People like Concha, my mom.
People like me.
Like me.
Know it, fight it, end it.
Go to pancan.org.
Oh, honey, how is work? Good. What would you like for dinner? Oh. Oh. Mom! Mom? 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 Just a second, I need to take care of something really quick. What? Can you fix this, Mom? Now, listen here, you ungrateful little brat. You're gonna start showing your loving mother a little respect. Let's go. Outside! And thank goodness my important phone call! Don't do anything, Mom. Get out of there, you stupid whore! Leave me alone! What are you doing to get now made up, you stupid whore? I can't take this anymore! Get out of there, Molly! Dammit, Molly, open the door! I told you!
We have Councilman Hayek, that he was invited to stay for work, so if you'd like to come. Yes? Thank you.
Not this time, please. James, not this time. This time, I'm not gonna do any mistakes, so I will do whatever I can. On behalf of the governing body of the Board of Prospect Park, I would like to welcome you all to our small town that has a big heart. It is an honor to have you here in this council chamber to conduct your business. This is truly an honor for the residents of Prospect Park. Your presence here will put our town on the front pages and for the public to know who we are and where we are. Your honors, our doors are always open for you. And again, thank you for choosing Prospect Park as a friend. And again, I welcome you all to our company house.
Councilman Hayek noted that Prospect Park is a small town and with a big heart, and that's a very true.
That's why I owe you all the honor.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Prospect Park is our smallest municipality in the county of the state, but by no means is it least on our priority list. We have a great working relationship with the mayor and the council. Here at Prospect Park, and administrators, and all the wonderful people you have working for this great hurdle. You guys did an excellent job. Hoxville Park is one of our favorite parks within the county, and we have Deborah Hoffman back there nodding her head because of the CDBT allocations that we were able to grant you guys this last coming year. I think you're doing an outstanding job, and the entire council, mayor, and the administration is to be commended for such wonderful work that you're doing. Thank you for having us. And that being said, I want to turn the conference agenda over to our cabinet commissioners.
Thank you, Deputy Director. First, on the agenda, we have a presentation from Realde Petronio. This year, we, through the budget process, created a division of alternatives to domestic violence, and something that is near to Realde Petronio's heart, we'll tell you more. I'd like to bring Susan, Susan up with you.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on. I do have a handout, and I have actually a presentation to watch. Well, basically, first I want to thank everybody in Prospect Park for having you here, and you're absolutely, and I also want to thank my fellow colleagues down the road because I know this country's not going to be able to support me, and I thank you all again. Unfortunately, there's a need for domestic violence programs in Pasaic County, and I say unfortunately because we don't want to have the new programs for victim of domestic violence. Something you might not know about me, but I had a twin cousin who actually had the same birthday as me, when two former police officers shot each other in the face. Now, I don't know who, I know a piece of paper is not going to stop the bullet. But one of the goals I hope this program will accomplish is to give women the strength and power to at least try and get help. And sometimes that's enough, hopefully. Well, I wanted to talk about what my program is about, or our program, I should say, and why it's important. My eventual goal is to have pretty much a fall serving program where a victim of domestic violence, where somebody in need of services, a battle or a user, can find and assist them, whether it's finding a restraining order, providing services, providing counseling, or battle counseling. I know we can't open ABC within just a few months, so I'm doing this presentation in the handouts, trying to give an overview of what I hope we can do immediately, next year, three years, four years, as we know, where I'm basically talking about. I'd like to kind of break it down into three handouts. And I just want you all to know also, I came up with this inclination based on needing several different groups in Pasaic County, meeting with judges, prosecutors, and a lot of departmental. The three handouts are basically legal representation, counseling, and community outreach. With the legal representation, I'm modeling our program on Boecon County's offering the domestic violence program, and what I'm seeking to do is get volunteer attorneys to represent victims who qualify and need representation, pre-representation, out of restraining order hearing. Why is that so important? Legal services right now, the budget has been cut tremendously, they're not able to take that many people. What people they do take have a very, very low income range to qualify. They also do not, my understanding is that they do not take people who have any immigration issues. Sometimes those people are some of the most vulnerable people who need a restraining order. So what, me as an attorney and a former bar member, well, I'm sorry, pregnant of the bar, I have been recruiting and reaching out to both Pasaic and Bergen attorneys, both on criminal and civilian, to try to get them to volunteer their time to represent somebody in court. Usually for one hearing, to find a restraining order hearing, and then hopefully that person will have a restraining order. That is something none of the other groups offer, besides legal services in its limited capacity, so I think that's extremely important. I know all of the other groups have expressed interest in supporting that. I don't know if down the road we can expand it to different income groups. Maybe have a sliding scale fee, even if somebody had to pay $10, having some skin in makes them show up more, a little more responsible, a little more committed. But my bottom line goal is to represent victims who don't qualify for services elsewhere that we can help. I've been doing that for 21 years in Bergen County, they've been around for 35 years, so they have a great program. If we get busy enough, if that's what I word, I would love to entertain long-term, perhaps a part-time attorney out there, kind of how the municipalities do it with part-time prosecutors, into that nature. That's just a long-range goal. If, again, we're busy enough where we don't have enough attorneys who will volunteer, because our bar does a lot of volunteering, and we're kind of a small bar, a small county, so I don't know how much people we'll have, one of the other things. I know our judiciary is great, even though we're losing so many, Judge Reed currently does the domestic violence, but I have no doubt that if we had asked the judges, "Look, we have certain people who can volunteer only certain days," I'm sure we can work with the judiciary to schedule more certain timelines that we can get our volunteers there. To be able to get a file ready and somebody to be able to go to court with that person, and since we're looking for volunteer attorneys, we want to make the job kind of easy, because you can spend an entire day, or just a trial, come back consecutive days, we are going to eventually need a paralegal who's going to do intake, that's going to be one of the staff that we will need. I think we should have at least somebody fighting war, the program's finished fighting war, the future's a big need for that community. That person who does intake will need training to also assess whether they qualify and are they a victim. You know, there's nothing worse than getting a file and deciding to go to court and having a case. I mean, that wastes everybody's time. Might include people that need witnesses, we want a big church in spirit to do it. That's all we eventually need to be a full-time staff member position. All right? So some of the goals also, when you look at the outline, with the legal services, obviously you're getting the word out in the communities, community outreach, recruitment of attorneys, recruitment of staff, perhaps COE programs which are continually relevant to train, maybe our younger members who really want not know that much about representing victims, want to try. I was there once, I appreciate the opportunity, I know people do appreciate it. So that's another part of it. The other section really is counseling services. Now, we have a couple of different groups in Pasaic County. We have Rafa House, Two Family Services, Pasaic County Women's Center. A lot of them offer more counseling to victims, or they're looking to strengthen families or strengthen the victims, not necessarily address battle intervention. In fact, I don't think any of them do do that in Pasaic County. That's different than animal management. You see a lot of okay, usually have to go to animal management. Animal management is more dealing with your inability to control, perhaps to respond to a certain situation, you get mad quickly. That could show up in parenting, that could show up in a lot of family-related type issues and with the criminal, but battle intervention is different. Somebody who's in a cycle of domestic violence, you want to interrupt that cycle, under what an alcoholic, you want to interrupt the cycle. Those groups do not offer battle intervention, so that is something I would like to see quicker rather than later, because that's something that there's a need for. I know the criminal judges and prosecutors would also like to see that. It's your ability to do shared services, we think of that nature. Possibly, we need somebody who can get in there initially, who's going to explore the opportunity for shared services, whether it's a crisis hotline, whether it's battle intervention with the judiciary, the prosecutors end, whether the counseling services as some group can only offer in part. So, the counseling side is really, I would say, the second portion of the entire program. At some point, we're going to need to hire consultants, social workers, or licensed, trained individuals who can do the counseling. Where's going to be? Well, a lot of people work, we don't want to take their jobs away from them. We're going to have to reach out churches, communities, see if they will partner with us and allow us to do that. Different communities might have different requirements, whether it's out of it, Spanish. Female aggressors are starting to become more common, and I think that is because you see on the internet, it's a lot easier, where you don't necessarily see female aggressors that are typically violent, you do see them really harassed and threatened through the use of email and those kind of communications. Now, that's a different group as well. So, we eventually need to do a lot of community outreach, to see who's out there that would allow us to perhaps use them for counseling morning, for evening. So, again, we will need people in place for that. Because generally, categorically, as I see it, it's pretty much a community outreach. Again, I want to emphasize, our goal is to step on them who's out there, not step on anybody's toes, but targeting educational-type programs, community outreach, and letting them know our services are there, what you're working with other people in community crises responding to, whether it's police departments in a different town. I think it's a very big, important component. That might be more long-term, but we'd like to eventually get people in place for that. I know, and I don't know if you heard this from, but somebody had told me that just going and speaking to teenagers, and unfortunately, teen daddy violence has escalated, or you could read more about it. They need to hear over and over, you know, how to be treated this way, know that not separate behavior, especially in situations that don't have impact. They might not really have good sense. So I do think community outreach and education is also a big portion of this. So starting more right now, I want to get somebody in place who can start doing the need assessment. My goal for at least before the end of this calendar year is to try to get legal services up and combine it with getting a paralegal in who can start doing that. Obviously, my intention, I've stepped on toes with anybody who was in charge about that partly, to be a liaison with the judiciary, the bar, and, you know, hit up all my fellow attorneys to do this. Next year, I'm going to look for more, obviously, in the budget, to expand the program, as I was talking about. So, once we start getting more people in, we'll need assessment, hopefully more shared services. I do know there's a lot of grants out there, there's day aid. Again, we don't want to take away anything that people who have setups right now, we don't want to take their money, but I have no doubt we need certain criteria we can apply separately to try to help everybody out. Any questions? Anybody?
Freeholder, great presentation. We talked a little bit more about, we had a side conversation, we talked about some of the grants that are available to fund this acquisition, and some of the things that Bergen County is doing to offset the burden on taxes that were going to sit from Pasaic County as well.
Can I have somebody else answer that question?
Sure.
You know, I could go to that. Susan Di Giacomo had been helping me out for the last year, she's been attending meetings with me, she was probably part of Boecon County's setup, and I know you had a history with it, but you're doing a little bit more than I do at all. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Susan Di Giacomo, presently. I am the Assistant Director of Alternatives to Domestic Violence at Bergen County, and I also am the Legal Program Director. I oversee seven of the programs that we currently have. In addition, I am very much involved with the grants and the grantors. So there's BAWA grants, there's BAD grants, there's CPMP grants, your formerly DIFIS from Department of Children and Family Services, and they are very much one of the stakeholders that looks for a battle intervention program. So those are some of the areas where grants are available.
I know we also got a community foster development grant that serves low and moderate income people, which is why I tapped to the handout, the income link, which obviously keep in mind for doing services to people in that income group.
There's also one foundation grant I hold to that also goes to domestic violence as well. They're a little bit on the downswing now because of the state of the economy and the interest rate, but they have always been friends to domestic violence causes.
Chair, it's actually a great program in Bergen County, I'm just curious, how much of Bergen County's budget is grant-funded?
Um, we, our salary line is approximately half-funded by grants. And we really rely on consultants to keep our staff, our full-time staff, there. So we're half-staff, half consultants.
Were there any other questions? Thank you, Freeholder, and Susan, for that great presentation.
I have a question for you.
What do you see, Matt?
Are you going to partner with the local individual towns that have deferred?
Actually, your deferred currently is supervised by, say, a county women's center, and if they need any support, they're certainly going to be there, but they are the supervising agency of that program.
Because they came to me, they wanted to, they want to do a fundraiser, they want to get their name out there, and I was just wondering if your program would eventually try to encompass all 16 municipalities as a support group for those individual towns.
That is actually the role of Passaic County Women's Center, and their initiative would always be able to support, however, that is...
I don't want to get into stepping on toes, and if it's their initiative, and I don't know if they can unofficially put, you know, not our goal to go and take anything away, but if they said, "Look, we need some help, here's what we need to help, if you can't tackle those kinds of shared services," sure, easy as all. And I met with some of the people there, and they were the ones who said, "Look, we need legal services to help with battle intervention." They may just don't, they might just not have enough people, sheer number, and if we're in a position to help, I would certainly love to eventually get to that point where, you know, any one of the towns could call and say, "Hey..."
Yes. If I may, I just want to share one, obviously, I wanted to see you, you know, the controlling of your arm, remember, when you first ran, you stated that this was a program, it was near and dear to you, and you wanted to see. You went to the county to see in particular, it's just something that's extremely encouraging, and you're going to actually talk with everyone together and make this happen. I just want to share personally, the two aspects I'm also encouraged by, and obviously the legal services are practically most important part of it. The battle intervention, because of the cycle that it breaks, because it addresses something that most programs don't, is so encouraging, and I know that it's a pattern, that many children grow up and witness the aspect of violence, have a greater probability to revive themselves and to be perpetrators of these crimes. So I'm very encouraged about that, as well as the education outreach. You know, I, I wish I personally, I grew up and witnessed domestic violence, and I grew up in neighborhoods where if you tried to speak up, people tore my business, and you had no idea where, you were literally felt helpless as a child, because there wasn't education in the schools, and many of us didn't even know how to identify domestic violence growing up, because it was, unfortunately, many neighborhoods were the norm. It happens, there are arguments between parents, but the brain of the education, the more information that's given to individuals, the more likely that they will be a phone call from reporting when you're just feeling powerless to stand up. And I just think that this is so vital for our communities, because we have individuals, as you mentioned, from other cultures who may come here and not know what the law is, maybe don't speak the language, you don't know how to navigate the system, maybe victims of domestic violence may assume, "I don't have any words, maybe I don't have all the documentation that's necessary, so I'm just not going to report." And to have individual employees paralegalistic, I will speak bilingual, or can speak in terms of two languages, or the Spanish or any other language, helping facilitate and navigate the system is so important. Once again, I just want to commend you as well, Susan Di Giacomo, for the work that you guys have done, because I think this will have a great impact, and this is just real, real help in the programs that are needed in our communities. Again, thank you so much for following up. Thank you. Just a few other introductions. I know we have Councilman Sacaria here today, Councilman Rob Artis from Prospect Park is here, or from, Mayor George Gostreng, our meetings, neighbor Mark Heldon is here as well. Next on my agenda, we have a public hearing to consider amendments on Section 8 of the subdivision and site plan resolution, the direction of the Pasaic County Planning Board.
Pasaic County Board chose the elders on June 10, 2014, adopted Resolution 20, Resolution Bar Dash 2014 Dash 445, which calls for a public hearing, which is scheduled for 5:30 on Tuesday, July 20th. The public hearing will take place at the municipal building for the borough of Prospect Park located 106 Brown Avenue, Prospect Park in Jersey. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear comments from the public regarding a proposal to make amendments to section, Sections 8 of the subdivision and site plan resolutions as recommended by the Pasaic County Planning Board. Notice of the public hearing was published both in record and the Herald Viewers on July 11, 2014. Local? Rilders Bartlett, Petronio, Dapi, James, Laura, your Deputy Director Bass.
Preholders Bartlett, Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass.
Here.
Director LaFour.
Here. Before I open the floor to the public, I need to remember, the administration feels it might be a public, someone to explain, complain to.
The man in order, member would like to explain what the amendments actually.
Please, complain directly.
Sorry, I've got a spot, I know you're up to the task.
No, I love talking about that. As a result of the planning board managing this program over the past several years, it's been a very successful program in that we've been collecting funds, as you know, through development review, as applications come before the planning board, and the monies that are collected for projects that are on county, right now, the way that ordinance is currently written, it's specified county routes, not all county roads. If it's a project that takes place on one of those designated routes, we collect a fee that's calculated based on the frontage of the property. And then that money stays within the community, it's used for improvements along that route in the, in the, in that particular community. For instance, in West Milford Township, the preholders through this program funded a town clock, which is right in the center of the West Milford Town Center, and the appropriation was $25,600. So that was a great improvement, a partnership with the township and the county. We've done signage for downtown, downtown business districts, we've done lots of different improvements that have benefited the corridors, just in terms of aesthetics as well as function and public safety. So the proposal before you is to extend the program from those one or two designated county highways within each of the 16 towns to all the county routes. And just to be clear, that only affects commercial properties, it does not affect single-family residential properties. So this is basically the kind of applications that we normally see before the county planning board, which are usually of a commercial nature.
And the request for the funding comes from the municipality?
It does. Many of the communities were happy and pleased with how the program's been going, but they felt that it's kind of restricted since only one or two roads are currently designated within each of the 16 towns. This way, we have maximum flexibility to do improvements on any county road, and you know, there's a lot of county roads in all of our towns. So it's, it's just a way of making the program more flexible, so that when the towns work with the county to think about these improvements, we're not restricted to one or two sites, one or two roads within the town, but also, again, it's, any monies that are collected within a particular municipality, the improvements stay in that municipality.
And Chair, this course, town no money at all?
Oh, correct. This is an assessment that's collected from the applicant that's before the planning board, so it does not involve any tax.
And Michael, the county is really supporting the money until the municipality requires.
That's correct. We're really acting as the manager and bank for this program. And what we do is, ideas for use of the monies come from both the county and the municipalities, we keep the communication going. The clock's a good example of that, because the county preholders wanted to do something, they knew that West Milford Township was trying to improve their town center, and then the township, I believe, had the actual idea of the clock, so that's sort of how that came together.
And not to put them on the spot, I think even North Teldin has made a request for we grant the license as well for lighting on Belmont Avenue.
That's why I'm here to try to support this.
We'll have it open to public portion, but I just recall.
That's correct. That's a, that's a great example of where the municipality has already started on a streetscape improvement program, and since these funds are available, we were able to continue the program, add to it. So the community was really in the leadership, and we were able to partner as a funding source.
Any questions from the Freeholders?
Okay, I'm taking a motion to open the, thank you, Michael. Take a motion to open the floor to public hearing?
I make the motion.
Second. Paid by Freeholder Laura, second by Freeholder Bass, so I'll call.
Preholders Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
We want the public to hear on these amendments, and these amendments only at this time. Please step forward, state your name, your address, I want to remind everyone that any comments you made are a matter of public record.
I only have one question. How can the border across the park benefit from the progress of the resolution? Our engineer is here, so just give us an idea of where to go, what to do. That's my question.
We will reach out to you, we will reach out to you, we'll let you know what the balances of the money are.
Oh, engineer.
Certainly. And we'll sit down and talk about the projects you have.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman, you have a new administrator, a member, for the first time yesterday, we're going to come sit down with her, if the mayor is available, and go over some of the things that the county can do to help with Crosswalk Park, so we look forward to that as well. Thank you, Mr. Preholder.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else in the public who should be heard?
And I felt emergency, as a councilperson. This is Councilwoman Westmeyer.
Ada Eric, Westmeyer Councilwoman. I actually came down with a resolution opposing this. This came before us last Wednesday night at council. The way it reads, and the comments that were written, handwritten on our copies that we were given, we were opposed. Now, according to the clock, what I heard about the clock was, you offered the clock, we didn't ask for the clock. So it's a little different. So, the way this was read the other night at council, and I love that explanation, you should come up and tell our people, because I'm going to hold this back right now.
Not to interrupt you, we are coming September, we have a meeting on the municipal.
No, no, but that's two months away.
Yeah, it's kind of nothing.
Harry, you live there, you know how we act today, we don't wait, we act now.
Hey, you know government, nothing happens overnight.
Until you get people like me in there. But what this is, is we need an explanation, a better one than this sheet of paper, and I mean, this was what was given to us, and it has, I don't know where the handwritten notes came from, and it's littered with handwritten notes all the way through. Our business community saw this, and they feel that they're being put hard pressed on this. We also, a couple of lawyers looked at it, and they said that this money is leaving the town. I like that explanation, okay. That's the first time I heard that explanation. So I'm going to hold back on the resolution that they sent me down on, because now, I'm not in favor of this, if that's the truth.
My name is Randy George, I'm the mayor of North Teldin. I'm here tonight to support this. I received a letter from Michael, replaced from the planning board, and he suggested they had $10,000 in an account for North Teldin. We created, we came up with two streetlights that cost $10,000. I sent it down to Michael, and he received the $10,000. I got it from the Freeholder Board about, I guess, two months ago.
That's right, actually.
I like exactly the way it worked. I believe the businesses should pay, you know, they make money in the town, and I like the fact that they're encouraged to give it back.
I only have one question. How can the border across the park benefit from the progress of the resolution? Our engineer is here, so just give us an idea of where to go, what to do.
Thank you. Joe Messer from Hawthorne, a member of the county planning board. The reason we did this at the planning board was because the money was being collected, and it wasn't a corridor, we couldn't spend the money. Now, Hawthorne, we made money on Quagmire Road, because of Walmart, Abe, but we couldn't spend it on Lafayette Ave. Lafayette Ave didn't raise any money, because it was all residential buildings. So this way, the money can be spent anyplace, on a county road, and that's that, which it would boost the towns and help us out, and I think it's a great program, and I hope the Freeholders go along. So, thank you, Freeholder. Nice to see you out of the county.
Where the county?
I know, you're the county.
This still is part of the county.
This school is part of the county, but the biggest part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public who should be heard on this issue, seeing no one at the microphone and which?
Second.
My fellow deputy, second by Chris Bass, roll call.
Preholders Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Councilwoman, when is your next council meeting?
I'm, um...
No, no, let's go.
Probably Sunday.
Third Wednesday of August. Okay, that would be... That's the 20th. We're on, we're on summer schedule, aren't we?
You know, I could walk in and ask it, assuming, asking, we'll send somebody up to discuss the program, so if you, if you'd like, I'll just email you.
Absolutely. Yeah. We'll make the appropriate personnel available to answer any questions, and hopefully this will be...
Because I'm going to bring what I just heard today back, and that's why I'm not giving that resolution, because what we heard Wednesday night is totally different than today. And I like the fact that, I mean, just what he just said, can't use, you took it from one street, but you can't use it on another, unless you expand it.
This will change the entire municipality's social relations, opposed to the ones that are listed currently.
And we have a lot of county roads, but most of it's just all woods.
I think we answered everyone's question, Councilman, there's a good question there. Thank you very much, your remarks, Joe, absolutely, thank you for your remarks, for your service on the planning board. Great. Motion for adjournment?
Very good.
How about adjournment?
That concludes my portion of the agenda.
Okay, review of agenda, K1 through K68, any other questions? Are there any late starters? Yes, directly. Unfortunately, it's, pardon my voice. K69 is a resolution applying to the State of New Jersey's Department of Environmental Protection, the Green Nations Program for the proposed Garrett Mountain Reserve Project. I think we have it in the record. K70 is a resolution guaranteeing the application of the Friends of St. County Parks to Department of Environmental Protection, the Green Nations Program for the proposed Rife County Park and Reserve Project. K71 is a resolution awarding a professional services contract to DAC Digital Assurance Certification for Specialized County Services in connection with the preparation of a risk assessment review, compliance review concerning odds issued by the county of St., and the St. County Utility Authority, and the St. County Improvement Authority for an amount not to exceed $10,000. And K72, which is a resolution authorizing the award contract to WHL Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Bill Leary Air Conditioning, Heating and Refrigeration Protection, New Jersey for the oil to gas conversion and boiler replacement, Doris American Senior Center Housing Complex as per the specifications, needing more required five votes to activate each. Thank you, Council. Any questions from the Freeholders on the late starters? All right. Is there a need for an executive session?
There is none.
All right, I'll take, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Okay, by James, second by Bass, roll call.
Preholders Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Announcement for open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specified in time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopting the reorganization, following the county clerk opening the administration building, to mail to two new services and boards with provisions in the law.
Roll call.
Preholders Bartlett, Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Here. Please stand for the indication.
A question for you all, University of New Jersey, I thank you that we can once again come together to do business in the county. Lord, we have had this opportunity, it's a privilege to come into the Prospect Park Board, and we ask you every family to be blessed to be in this place, from the mayor and all the county people, all the administrators and directors and all of the residents. We ask you to always look over the residents of the St. County, and to guide us with your wisdom, that when we fall short, you can make up the difference, and that you will always allow us to do those things that are the most, the most best service for the community, in your name, President.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for its stance on the mission of God, the universal, the routine, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, remember, Alderman Quinn, who died serving in the United States Armed Forces, and also included in that moment of silence, someone that St. County, New Jersey, was a true fighter for the people represented in Congress. Thank you. The rule of the unit of June 24th, we continue in motion. Some move?
Yes.
Like that, second by Katronio, roll call.
Preholders Katronio, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Any comments or report from the Freeholders?
I just want to share really quick that last year, we had the opportunity to implement Senior Citizens Appreciation Month, and this year, we'll redo it in August 18th through the 24th. Thanks to the hard work of Deborah Hoffman and Mary Kazinsky, we have this amazing program throughout the calendar, where businesses in different municipalities have offered free food, certain programs for seniors during that week. For certain examples, McDonald's will offer free breakfast to seniors during that week, Senior Citizens Appreciation Month, August 18th through the 24th. We also have specific diners, we have municipalities from Wayne to Patterson to Harford, I believe Volta Bro is also on the list of restaurants that will participate, which is close. As of yet, we don't have a business in Prospect Park. If you guys know anyone, please let Deborah Hoffman know. I know it doesn't apply to anyone here, because no one's here, is a senior, everyone's too young to qualify, but it is a one plus. You are too little and too young to qualify. If you're a senior, the businesses will knock hard, anyone, don't worry about it. But it is a great program, because it encourages participation from the businesses around the county, and we're really excited about it this year, we've been expanding, we're going to have a senior picnic, we're going to have a lot of programs, some of the theaters are offering free movies and free popcorns to the seniors. We're having information sent out to all the municipalities, so you can let your seniors know, it's just our way of appreciating seniors.
Deputy Director Bass? Thank you, sir. I want to inform all of the residents of Prospect Park, Ginnick County, and St. of upcoming St. County Fair. This year's St. County Fair will take place August 14th through 17th at Garrett Mountain Reserve. This is the first year that the fair is actually being coordinated on behalf of the St. County Boys, Children, Freeholders, and our friends of the St. County Park. We have an exciting weekend full of activities going on, there's going to be fireworks on Friday night, obviously, rides, games, vendors, there'll be a boxing match, car shows, we're shooting somebody out of a cannon, that's going to be helicopterized.
Sorry, shoot.
Get ahead of myself there. So, no cannon shooting this year, the Sheriff's Department will get that, but it's going to be a great time for the whole family. We're going every day from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. In addition to it, we're also having a 4K or 5K run on behalf of the St. County CASA. We're doing the St. County Chess Tournament, we're going to do a Battle of the Bands, it's going to take place, so it's going to be a lot of exciting events going on, our 4H program, it's really chipped in, it's going to help us out a lot, too, breeding animals, chick-hatching, pony rides, petting zoo, beer garden, beer garden, beer garden, and hopefully you all have a great time, all right? August 14th through 17th.
Thank you, Deputy. Anyone else have any comments? Okay, I just want to add, Councilman, you may be interested, today, some county officials... Anyone else have any comments? Okay, I just want to add, not so many may be interested, today, some county officials met with West Milford officials at the Marshall Hill Bridge issue. We had a pretty, I thought, informative and productive meeting. West Milford was very forthcoming with their, with their concerns. We explained the issues facing the county and facing the bridge. I think a great dialogue was started, and hopefully we'll be able to address the issue of repairing this efficient bridge as least possible and convenient, although it will be inconvenient to the people in this moment. So I just wanted to know what they would say. And we started that conversation.
I, I saw the email on that. The thing about bridges in West Milford is when it happened at the Elks, that debacle that happened, that's what West Milford's afraid of.
So am I. Thank you. Those are the common sentences. But we will continue that dialogue and understand this isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow, next week, next month, but it's not for next year. You can't begin to discuss it, you can't begin to discuss it simultaneously. So we started that dialogue, and like I said, we'll continue our talk through the issues as time goes on. All right. One intimated motion. Second. Motion made by Beth, second by James, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Take a motion, go open the public portion of the meeting. Some move? Motion by Beth. Second by Cetroneo, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on any issue? Please step forward, state your name and address. You have three minutes, and remember, anything you say is a matter of public record.
Will be held against me. Ada Eric, West Milford, I'm a councilwoman, but I'm not here as a councilwoman. This is as a State County taxpayer. First, I want to thank you for the traffic lights on Skyline Drive, Greenwood. They, I'm on the ambulance there in Greenwood, and they are truly a dog sense of kindness. It totally alleviated the backup all the way up to Skyline Drive and on the 511. But there's where the problem starts, the 511. You have a proposal to put in a circle, a circle that the state deems, you know, they're too dangerous, don't put in circles. But I understand that a grant has been given, it was applied for a way back, finally came through, and I'm sorry, it's a very ridiculous thing to do, down on the bottom of that road is to put a circle. If that is for road improvement, that grant, take a look at Margaret King and Slope's Road. There's where a traffic light is needed. The morning backup goes well over a mile. Last week, there was a horrendous car crash there on that corner. It was deemed it was too, you know, they had a sheriff there at one time, it was too dangerous to put a cop there. So there's where you should be looking, not to do a circle on Skyline Drive. Skyline Drive, you fixed it. It works perfect. Use the money elsewhere if it can be, or if it is a grant that was only for that, give it back. Reapply and put us a light on the other side. That's used by everybody over there. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Seeing no one at the microphone, and... Second by Freholder Cetroneo, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Council, the issue of the roundabout, we don't call them circles anymore. The issue of the roundabout on the intersection you're talking about, there's been a lot of spirited discussion on that. But everyone has to understand that the county, it's not only the secret grant to repair it or to enhance it, enhance the safety of that intersection, but also we have a obligation to protect the public. There are a lot of opinions back and forth on this. There's a lot of dialogue going on to see maybe we can cherry pick the best parts of all the recommendations that are made, but at the end of the day, we have to do something there because it has one of the highest crash incidents in all of the counties, and that's factual. So we do have a responsibility to protect the public. We're going to try to do it in a very intelligent way, on that lies of the law, on that enhance the safety. We have to rely on both professionals, both the county, the state, and West Milford, to put their input into all of our...
One of the things you want to look at then is the approach immediately before that of some West Milford.
I mean, we'll have plenty about the town that I'm sure to discuss this matter in the coming months.
We are arranging right now a public meeting in Greenwood. I don't know if the date has been set yet.
No, but it's maybe the second, the second week in September.
We want to wait till after the summer, where people are around. We will have a public information meeting in Greenwood so that people can raise their concerns. The only correction that I would make is that the state and the federal government actually encourage circles, which is why the money is coming from roundabouts, I'm sorry, we don't call them circles. And there is actually a difference, which I have learned, that circle in Franklin Lakes is not the modern roundabout that would be built here, but there will be public meeting in Greenwood in September, and it'll be on our website, Greenwood's website.
Okay.
I do agree with Ron Yeller, I mean, that really is, I don't have any balls to get there.
Lots.
Did we ever share the data on the accident rates for that other intersection with the ...
The skyline?
Yes. So they have that same data?
Yeah, we had a meeting with the mayor and the, and the county administrator a month or so ago, where we shared that we actually had representatives of the county TVA, and we had the road highway there as well, right?
And they were all going to be at this.
And they will all be at this public hearing as well. Illustrious statistics.
Okay, take a motion to add K-69 through K-72. Second. Second by James, second by Beth, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Motion to K-1 through K-72. Second by James, second by Cetroneo, Freholders so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Doing the business? Personnel?
Move personnel agenda.
Second by James, second by Beth, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Those list? Second by James, second by Beth, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Certification payroll. Second by James, second by Beth, so call.
Freholders Cetroneo, Dapi, James, Laura, Deputy Director Bass, Director LaFour.
Yes. Received departmental report.
Received file.
So I call for adjournment. I want to take this opportunity to thank Prospect Park for hosting us, providing for And I want to thank also the people of Prospect Park and throughout the county and our department that's over here to see us, and hopefully progress forward. Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn. Make a motion by Dapi, second by Cetroneo, three.
Freholders Cetroneo.